Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to the La Hut Little Feeder. Now tonight, we have got two candidates here who are vying for the role to become the next Mayor of La Hut, but with every election, there's one thing standing in their way, and that's your vote. Where's the opening credits? Welcome to It's in the Ballot here. So, we have got a fun, exciting night. I believe this particular show is the one to watch for as I have been advised from various different sources within the media. So, we've got a big one out on there. Now, before we get to the opening, was it, statements in the electorate video, Ben, welcome back, third show.
Thank you Sam. How are you enjoying the hut? Great to be here again, and can I say that this is a very special show for me, because this is the first edition of It's in the Ballot, where I'm not only a co-presenter, I'm also a voter. So, I'm going to be looking very carefully at these two gentlemen here.
Oh, that's certainly right. Okay, so, now before we get to the finding out who the candidates are, let's sit there and find out a bit about La Hut.
The mayoral race, Hut City Council. The Hut City Council is located at the bottom of the Hut River, commonly referred to as La Hut. Hut City Council is an amalgamation of what was La Hut City, Patoni, Eastbourne and Wainoia Mata, prior to the 1989 amalgamation reforms. So, what's unique about Hut City? Well, it has 11 train stations, 46 roundabouts, three Purruri streets, two high streets, two Frederick streets, 18 sets of traffic lights, not including the pedestrian crossing runs, including five steps on State Highway 2. Now, let's get to the important part, the voting system. Hut City Council uses the electoral system, first past the post. So, when it comes to choosing for mayor, you have one tick on who you think will best represent you at this election.
Okay, now, we have got two candidates here. We've got Campbell Berry and Tony Stellinger. Now, I want to make sure I've got those names right, and you've got your microphones. So, I want to ask, who would like to go first for their opening statements? The incumbent mayor or the former CEO?
I can go, I can start.
Okay, let's start off with your opening statements, Campbell.
Kia ora koutou everyone. Thank you for being able to have the opportunity this evening to the whole team in putting this event together. I just wanted to say that it's been the privilege of my life to serve as mayor for the past three years, and I'm really proud that we've been able to lead a council that has gotten back to basics, that we were focused on the infrastructure investment that's needed to deal with growth and the aging assets that we have. Also, in dealing with that infrastructure, we've required developers to pay their fair share towards it. We cut corporate welfare and really got our priorities right as a council over the past three years while we moved forward. We've also followed through on our commitment to Nine Eye Pool, not only just building a fantastic world-class facility, but one which will have a Green Star, Five Star rating standard, which will be the first aquatic facility in New Zealand. Also, we're able to secure $27 million from government to be able to achieve that, and actually, we've been able to secure record funding from government for a range of projects in La Hut. I'm really proud of our rubbish and recycling changes. We will put our environment first, and 80% of our ratepayers and residents are able to, are now paying less for their waste services, and we've got an all-moderable projects like the Eastern Bay shared park from Riverlink. So, we've achieved a lot, but there's still a lot more to do as well. So, I'm looking forward to being able to talk more about during this election, why I would like to continue to serve as mayor of this great city and continue to front up to the big challenges we face and make the most of the opportunities. Kia ora.
So, one question I want to ask is, this election, you're going all or nothing. What's the reason behind doing that?
I think as a mayoral candidate, I'm obviously the incumbent mayor, and it's really important to put your vision and your ideas forward, and if people choose they don't want you, then it's probably time to move on and do something else. So, for me, I am all in and really putting it on the line.
Okay, now Tony, your opening statement.
Kia ora everybody, and thank you for those who've come and joined us in the little feeder tonight, and those streaming in from home. My name is Tony Stellinger, 50 years here in the hut, and proud to live here. It's a great place. I am standing for mayor this time. First time for me, I've spent 12 years as the council's chief executive, finishing up in 2019. Prior to that, I had a career in finance and strategic management. The reason I'm standing for mayor is, I believe a change is desperately needed. I've been approached by numerous people throughout the hut, just telling me they're unhappy with what's going on, and asked me if I can play a part in making a difference. What I'm hearing is, council spending is just out of control, and the rates are going up far too fast. In three years, the council has increased its rate take by 30%. That's a huge difference, and it makes a huge difference to the people of the city at a time when there is a cost of living crisis for some. My vision is to get that spending back under control and keep rate increases to a reasonable level. Also, what I'm hearing is, consultation with people when there's big changes coming upon us has just been ineffective, insufficient, and too little, too late. The big changes I'm talking about are the Three Waters, where what we had was a survey by the council done way down the track when it was pretty much a done deal, and really, when you looked at that survey, it was more akin to a push poll. I completed it myself, and in the end, I didn't submit it for that very reason. It felt like I was being led towards the government's position. And now we have the changes to intensification. I would have expected to see some big resistance from this council to these changes, which will make a huge difference across our city, with large, high-rise apartment blocks potentially coming into neighbourhood near you. Another reason I'm standing for council is I've been hearing this mantra coming out about getting back to basics. What I've heard is, the basics are actually failing. We've got a desperate need for more homes in our city, but yet, people are really struggling to get a basic thing as a building consent from this council. It doesn't seem to be as difficult up the valley and upper hut. And finally, while the council talks big on its spending plans and the projects, they actually haven't done much. All we've really seen after the three years is photo opportunities with the politicians leaning on shovels announcing the thing is about to start, three years down the track. I think the city deserves better, and I'm standing for mayor to make that happen.
Okay, and I want to know, why are you hedging your bets when it comes to this election?
Yes, it is a common strategy for first-time mayoral candidates. Campbell did the same, I believe, three years ago. The reason being is, I really am striving to become the mayor of this city. If I miss out, I want to at least get on the council as a councillor, and do as best I can from that position.
Okay, and I definitely know Georgina Byer done quite well out of that scenario, because she could just get, "Georgina, you should stand for mayor", and she magically unexpectedly became mayor and started making world history from Carterton. Okay, so, we'll get up to our first round of questions. So, because we've got so few candidates, we have no order sheet, we just go left to right, left to right, and all that sort of stuff. With the questions where it comes here, all candidate, basically, the candidate chooses a box number, and then they answer the question in it. And with the fashion of the TV show, It's in the Bag, we also have booby questions. So, that is where we have dodged the question and deferred the question to another candidate. The principle behind that is, they get our jail-free counts, but they are not meant to be used, because if they are being used, what are they hiding? As the question can be asked. So, Campbell, what box number would you like to start off with?
15.
I like how you started right in the middle of our set of boxes. Interesting strategy, let's see how it plays out. With the recent, oh. There we go. With the recent slips in Wainoia Mata, trapping people in the suburb, what plan do you have to get second alternative route to Wainoia Mata, and will you aim to have it in the long-term plan?
First of all, can I say, the level of disruption that's been caused across the city over the past six weeks has been pretty significant. We've had hundreds of slips across La Hut, and particularly on the eastern Hut Road, the impact on Stokes Valley residents has been pretty serious, and that's a continuing situation, and we're working really hard to get one lane reopened there. What this entire issue has really highlighted for me is the stark reminder of our changing climate, and that, you know, we talk about sea level rise, flooding, earthquakes, but I don't think we were quite thinking about having six weeks really of record rain and having our hills starting to fall apart on us. So, the impacts of climate change are going to be serious, and they're going to be significant, and we're not always going to be able to think about exactly what that will mean. So, the council actually in the past week has made a commitment to use our Better Off funding, which has been allocated from government, that's 33.4 million, and we will, we've asked officials to go away and look at what resilience looks like for our communities that are particularly vulnerable in a serious weather event. So, that is, there's a specific focus there on Stokes Valley, but of course, Wainoia Mata has the challenge of one way in, one way out, and also our western hill suburbs as well. But we need to take a holistic look at that, we can't afford everything, our budget and our finances are limited, but we do need to put that climate resilience lens over our next long-term plan, absolutely.
Okay, what box number do you would like to pick, Tony?
Number eight, coming right up. Your question, should Hut City Council social housing firstly be offered to those who are locals?
Well, I'd like to give a good dissertation on this one, but the answer is simply yes. I believe that social housing should be for locals, there's plenty of people in need of housing, and so I can't see why the council would be owning homes for the purpose of people from outside the city.
Okay, Campbell, what box number?
26.
All right, what will you bring that is different from the current leadership?
This is a really tricky one, Sam.
That is a tricky one.
So, I suppose I'll talk about what I bring in the leadership that I offer as mayor, and for me, it's about being upfront and honest with our residents about the big challenges we face as a city. I think about climate change, I think about transport, I think about infrastructure. When we first, when the first council, when the council, new council was formed in 2020, we had a report from Wellington Water which said there was $230 million in deferred maintenance to our through-water infrastructure, 190 kilometres of water pipes that hadn't been maintained, and we were at risk of failing, along with 100 kilometres of wastewater pipes. Now, those sorts of numbers, we've been, you know, those are scary numbers, those are numbers that councils in the past haven't really wanted to talk about. We've been upfront and honest with people about that, and we've also talked about the scale of the challenge and the need to do things differently, and the need to put more money in the budget to be able to fix that backlog, and also front up to the challenges ahead of us when it comes to that type of infrastructure as well. So, with me, you always have someone who will level with you, who will be upfront and honest, and have those difficult conversations, because we need to be thinking longer than a three-year election cycle, we need to be thinking about 10, 20, 30 years into the future, in a city we want to leave for our future generations.
Okay, Tony, what box number do you want to pick?
Number nine.
You're definitely getting me having to cross all the menus on the tablet. Are you having that same fun over there?
Absolutely, every time, Sam. All right, your question is, are you a current member of any political party, and has your campaign received any support from a political party, including access to voter databases and volunteers?
The answer to that is a definite no. Myself and the other candidates standing on behalf of the team, I'm with United Hut, have not received any support from any political party. We have no obligations to any political party, and so when changes come through from the government, no matter which party is in charge, we are free to advocate for the city without any obligation or commitment.
Okay, Campbell, what box number do you fancy?
21.
Okay, my question for you, there is no overlap between planet-saving planning and car-centric planning. What will you do this term to actively reduce the number of private vehicles on Hut City streets?
This is a real challenge, and this is something we need to grapple with. As a city, we know that 52% of our carbon emissions come from vehicle use, the average in New Zealand is 21%. So, we're well above, so we need to be thinking about how do we get people into other forms of transportation. But we also need that those other forms to be good and reliable, particularly our public transport, and also active cycling options as well, so they need to be good. The other side of this as well, is, that I've really struggled with, is the car versus bike debate that continuously happens. We need to try and move beyond that and think about what an integrated transport system really looks like. We're actually, by providing more options for people, you're also making it easier for those who need to be in their car and on the roads to do their business as well. So, I'm really proud that we signed off an integrated transport strategy, that was one of my commitments in the previous election campaign, and we had a professor at Massey University who said that it was the holy grail of transport and menus planning in New Zealand. So, for me, it's about implementing that, and obviously having to have potentially some tough conversations, but that's what needs to happen.
And just before we go there, I've got a person online who is questioning our show format, Heidi. I will just put your question on the screen there. The format for It's in the Ballot is based on multiple candidates. Not all shows have two candidates, some of them have up to 12. So, the point of the question is, you get one question per candidate. On this particular occasion, we've got two candidates, so that's how we shift between the two. When it comes to hard-hitting questions, all candidates answer the hard-hitting questions, which will be happening after eight o'clock. So, I hope they can address some of the concerns after seeing your comments come through on the livestream. So, Tony, let's move on.
Question number one, please.
Lucky first question.
But is it the first?
I like to play a little game where I wait to see how long it takes for somebody to choose box number one, and I think this might be a record for us, so that's exciting. What are you personally going to do to role-model climate action, such as biking to work every day, going zero-waste, or eating a plant-based diet?
Well, I certainly don't eat a plant-based diet. I like my veggies, but I also like a bit of meat. Zero-waste, I do my best to recycle, and I'm going to continue to do that. I'm not sure whether that meets the requirements of zero-waste, but let me talk about the other one, which is biking to work every day. Actually, I've spent the last few years working from home, so my travel and emissions have been very small. I do have a petrol-powered car, but I hardly use it. I look back last year, and actually, the mileage I racked up on my bike exceeded that in my vehicle. So, you know, I try my best to look after the environment, and I'm going to continue to do that as the mayor. And one thing I have pondered is, I see mayors do usually take on a ratepayer, predominantly ratepayer-funded vehicle. And, you know, that's a challenge for me to know what's the best thing to do, because they will be, that would be an EV vehicle, but I don't know whether that is a good use of ratepayers' money on the one hand, and also taking on a new car, such as that, I don't think that's necessarily a good idea. So, that will be the challenge for me. If I do, am successful as mayor, is that the right thing to do, to have a vehicle which is predominantly funded by the ratepayer?
Let me ask, was your CE car funded by the ratepayer?
No, it was not. Yes, I am sure.
Okay, what box number do you want to ask, Campbell?
22.
Okay, here's your question. What are your plans for flood mitigation and resilience if you become elected, particularly the riverbank car park area?
So, we have actually just this week been able to get resource consent, well, last week, with the weeks emerging at the moment, for Riverlink, which is a significant step forward in a project that has gone for a very long time, acknowledging that that's, you know, been a long time in the making, and there's been a lot of people involved, including Tony and others through that process. So, we are able to move forward with that. Melling, the interchange will start in the next few months, as well as the widening of the river. We know back in 2004 that we were a couple of hours of rain away from floods, which would have done billions of dam damage to our city. So, the sooner that work gets started, the better, and also, how can we leverage off that to make better transport options with the moving of the Melling Station, connecting better with the city, and also from a placemaking point of view as well. So, that is the key project that will make a real difference when it comes to flooding, particularly for the CBD and the valley floor.
Okay, Tony, what box number?
The last one.
Number 30.
And I think we've set a record of not having the booby question within like the first, like, two or three questions, so we're doing quite well.
I have however, got two cards in this box, so that's a bit exciting. How shall we handle this one, Sam?
Would you like to pass it to me, and I'll have a look to see what happened there?
Sure.
The top, oh god, that is awkward, because they're both actually Hut-related questions. Well, you choose which one, and then you leave the other one for when we do find the missing empty box.
Okay.
Because, you know, I mean, we do have that on some of them, and I mean, they're both good questions, and very valid.
So, you know, if we get to the end and we don't have an empty question, maybe we should put this one to Tony as well, he did pick the box with two in it after all.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
All right, we'll start here. For all intents and purposes, Three Waters reform is happening. What's your opinion of it, and how will you support Hut City Council through reforms?
Well, I definitely believe there needs to be reform in the Three Waters space. That doesn't, that's not to say I agree with everything that's on the table now from the government, and we have recently heard the Order of General Comment that elements of the proposals are unworkable, it would be difficult to have accountability over them. But as I say, I believe reform is needed. What I really have been upset about is how the council has handled these proposals. Until the intensification plan came out recently, this was the biggest change hit the council since it was amalgamated. But where has been the engagement? Where has there been the comprehensive discussions in our community about the impact? And where has been the advocacy that comes from that, in terms of the changes and delivering what our community wants? I don't know that the council actually knows what the community would really want out of the proposals. We certainly haven't seen any fight back for anything the community might not want. So, that's my main concern.
Okay, Campbell, what box number would you like?
We'll go 11.
11. All right, here we go. What are your priorities to work on for the next three years if you're elected?
For me, it is a continuation of our focus, our relentless focus on infrastructure, making sure that we are prepared for any potential changes to reform, whether that be Three Water Reform or RMA Reform. And I just want to say that actually, council has been heavily engaged throughout these different reforms and submitting to government, and that includes submitting on the Water Services Entity Act, where we have raised a number of concerns about the size of these entities, accountability, what it means for local decision-making and planning. We have done that. We have done it however, in a constructive way. Yes, you won't find me joining a group of mayors and protesting with my chains on parliament law, because that doesn't achieve anything. So, I've worked really hard to try and be part of the solution, and to try and make these reforms better, so we can get the best deal possible for La Hut ratepayers, and we can make a real difference in tackling this challenge of Three Waters and under-investment that is happening right across the country. So, for me, again, it's about being upfront and honest about those priorities and what that focus will be. Alongside that, our focus on climate change, as I say, a climate resilience lens over everything we do, that's just been such a stark thing for me over the past winter that we've had, and again, having to make some hard choices and having those conversations with our community.
Okay, Tony, what box number?
27. All right, Tony, what's your biggest priority for the next term, and how do you intend on delivering on that?
Well, we've heard quite a bit about being upfront and honest, and Campbell has rightly commented on two of his promises he made in the 2019 campaign that he delivered, the wheelie bins and the document about transport planning. But I look back, and there actually were 19 promises on Campbell's website during that campaign. The other 17 were not delivered, so I think that's the sort of honesty we need. My priorities would definitely be cutting back on the extravagant spending. I've looked through the long-term plan that this council adopted, and there's 120 million additional money being spent on backroom overheads. It's just not good enough. All those extra overheads have to be funded through rates that our audience and those watching online will have to find from their own pockets. So, we need to get that spending back under control and reduce the amount of these excessive rate rises that Campbell and his team are putting upon us. The next priority would be putting the money where it's actually needed, which is the frontline services to our customers.
Cutting the money?
Hey, don't interrupt, please, I didn't ever interrupt you, Campbell. I'm cutting the money on backroom overheads, the money needs to go to frontline services such as our consents team, our overworked regulatory staff, we're struggling with the big load of consents coming through, and they just have not had the support from this council. So, that would be my second priority. The third one would be, not just having photo opportunities with shovels saying we're starting projects, but to actually get these projects done, to actually see the diggers in the fields digging holes. The Nine Eye Pool was supposed to be an urgent priority, three years to get the thing demolished. It's just not good enough, we need much more urgent action.
Okay, what box number, Campbell?
Six.
Six it is.
I think there should be a rule that if your opponent's going to talk about you, you should be able to respond.
Well, you're welcome to do that.
All right, a councillor resigns 12 months before the next election. What would you propose for the vacancy?
I think it would depend on the circumstances, it would depend on the situation within the council itself, so it's a really hard one to actually be able to answer right now. But I will take the opportunity to respond to some of the comments, and what I don't understand is a proposal of cutting the rates and cutting the spending, but then improving the services and spending more, and not giving any examples of what you would actually cut. It's called voodoo economics, and that's not what ratepayers here in La Hut deserve when we are having this conversation and this debate.
I told you, the 120 million worth of overheads that you've added to the budget, what are they for? What is that money being spent on?
You tell me.
It's your budget!
You tell me where...
120 million extra on overheads, and you can't give a single answer to what that's being spent on?
You have not provided us with an example of where you're pulling that money from. So, tell us.
I've told you, it's these extra overheads you've put in, and you don't even know what they are. I've seen official information acts asking for more information on this, and the council refuses to respond and provide the data.
Okay, so what I would ask, Tony, is, we'll bring our long-term plan...
Yeah, we're going off-topic here, so can we please wrap it up?
So, we'll bring our long-term plan to the next meeting, and you show me where this 120 million dollars in overheads is.
I most certainly will.
Okay, thanks for that confirmation. Now, your box number, Tony?
Have we had number two yet? Have we had number two yet?
Two is still up for grabs. And here it is. The entry into Stokes Valley is no longer fit for purpose, given the increase in population and traffic into the valley. It is chronically bottlenecked, it is vulnerable to flooding and accidents, and it's indirect, so wastes petrol. What will you do to ensure Stokes Valley gets a direct on-off access to the motorway?
Well, I'll just start with a little story because I lived in Stokes Valley when I was growing up and went to primary school there. My grandfather had built a little batch up the coast. And so, our weekends were quite often in the summer spent commuting in effect there. And my grandfather would say, "Don't worry, it's going to be quicker in the future because we're going to have a bridge across." So, here we are some forty-five years later and it's still not there. But I've got to be realistic. The council has basically cashed in the family silver. Rates are going up faster than they should and borrowing is going to be maxed out. There's no room for something like this in the council's budget. So, if it is to happen, it will only happen if it comes from central government. So, I think what the community deserves, and I'd give the same answer in relation to the second access in Wainui Mata, is it deserves a comprehensive business case to be done. And then, let's see how it stacks up. And if it stacks up that it is affordable with government funding, we need to advocate strong and hard to get it prioritized through the Regional Transport Committee.
Okay, Campbell?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three for you. And here's your question. Some of the new councillors will have no experience at local authorities and are novices in this area. What leadership qualities do you have to cohesively bring a group of councillors together?
Thank you. I think this is a really good question because I know for myself as a, you know, a new councillor, when I first was elected to the council, that there was probably more that could have been done through the induction process and supporting those councillors. So, for me, it really is around what sort of induction looks like, what sort of pairing up we can do with other senior councillors who can provide good advice. How can we make sure they're getting connected with obviously key council offices and doing all of that work? For me as a leader and for me as mayor, the key thing that I've introduced this term is having clear standards and expectations around behaviour. And that's really important for me because we need to ensure that the council is a safe place for all people, no matter their gender, no matter their sexuality, no matter their ethnicity. And we also need to make sure it's a safe place for all of our staff as well. So, for me, that's been often having to have some really tough conversations and having to do things that I don't really like doing. But you have to maintain those standards to ensure that the governance of the city can continue to function well and do what it needs to do in regards to passing long-term plans and making decisions for our ratepayers and residents.
Okay, Tony, what box number?
Three.
Number three.
Okay, yep.
It's question number twenty-two, if you can put that one up on the screen somehow. Great, okay. Your question, Tony. If you had to make the decision between repairing infrastructure or not increasing rates, which one would you do and why?
Well, most certainly we need to repair the infrastructure when it needs to be. And, you know, I've been on the council for a number of years and there was a huge, a huge investment in infrastructure over that period. And every dollar that the experts told had to be spent on repairs and maintenance was spent. Campbell Barry was there at the table when we were told this by the representatives from Wellington Water. So, I certainly reject the accusations, the implication that it was not openly and honestly managed in those days. It's simply wrong. I would like to just refer to some of the fantastic improvements in infrastructure which were delivered over that period.
Hotel.
Yeah, what have you done about that, Campbell? Don't seem to be too much. You did vote for it. You did vote for it, Campbell. I'd like to remember you. I did not vote for it. You did. You did vote for that hotel and the subsidies. Just remember and be open and honest as you're saying you are. So, Campbell said there's been decades of under-investment. I'd just like to give you this list of projects and compare it to what's been delivered by Mr Barry. The valley's first wastewater treatment plant at Seaview, stopping the disposal of raw sewage out into our Harbour entrance. The closure of Wainui's treatment plant to divert sewage from the Wainui Mata River. A major wastewater facility at Silverstream to substantially reduce overflows into the Hut River. Stage two of Silverstream's Class A landfill, providing environmentally secure solid waste disposal for decades to come. Wafer Two Stream, a serious contamination cleanup and stock bank upgrade. State Highway Two intersection upgrades at Daus, Korakora and Haywoods in partnership with NZTA. Important local flood protection works after the serious floods of 2004 and 2005. New low-cost and unobtrusive cycleways in the Hut, plus the Wainui walking and cycle path over the hill. Our new event centre and reconstructed town hall and many other sports and community facility upgrades. That is a proud record of the staff who've worked here for those decades, who have been maligned by you unfairly. And I'm going to stand up for them.
Okay. Campbell, what box number?
Twenty-eight.
All right, we have got our first booby question of the night, so I'll give you that.
Now, does it defer the question or dodge the question?
Dodge the question.
Okay, so I've got the right graphics. Your tablet is now working. In my hand?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, Ray's just given it to me and for some reason it's decided magically work when it's got to me to try and fix it.
Right, another number please, Campbell.
What box number? We'll go sixteen.
There we go, all right. Last year, some councils decided to create Maori wards for the local body elections. Hut City Council didn't. What is your position on creating Maori wards for the 2025 local body elections?
Yeah, so we had this conversation with Iwi, Tiatau and Nati Toa when we had the option of obviously bringing in Maori wards for this election. They made it really clear to us that they wanted to focus on partnership and obligations as a council directly with Iwi under the authority of Waipangi. And for me, we will have a representation review in the next council trainee and we will need to have that conversation about Maori wards. If that is something which Iwi are Maori would like to see happen, then I have no problem with supporting that personally. But what I would like to do generally with the representation review is to have an independent group actually review it and make recommendations to the council because, you know, it's a bit like turkeys voting for their own Christmas lunch when it comes to a representation review being done by the council because the councillors at the time are always going to be a bit self-interested in the result. And that actually happened in the last one, which was, which meant that commissioners came in and basically said, "You haven't done your job properly, council, so we're going to impose a citywide system, ward system, and we expect you to review it." So, that's really important and of course, we need to do all of that alongside our community through that process.
Okay, Tony?
Number four, working my way up there.
You are, I've noticed that. You're certainly making my job easier. I just have to keep going up numbers. Okay, your question. Wellington City Council has committed to normalizing Tereo Maori.
Change that to Hut City Council. I thought that was a balls-up in the writing up of the graphics.
Sorry, Hut City Council has committed to normalizing Tereo Maori. Would you commit to doing the same for Hut City? No, I think it was right, Sam.
Oh, it is right, okay.
Wellington's done it, well the Hut.
Okay. Beware, I didn't proof this set of questions. My latest proofing is Friday night's show.
I do understand the question. And when I was chief executive at the council, there was a plan to do exactly that. And in fact, the Wellington City Council policy was the model on which the Hut City Council's one was based. So, at the time I left, it wasn't fully implemented, but it's certainly been drafted and discussed amongst the staff. And I think it is important that we do incorporate Tereo Maori in our communications and in the way we work. But provided that there still is clear English available for people to read as well, as it is the language that most of us speak.
Okay, Campbell?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, the one fun part here is we all take it who proofs which questions. And I got the role of Friday's one because I had to make sure Friday's show is a regional council one. So, we're going to make sure the questions are focused on, they're not getting city council questions. So, yeah, we've all got slightly different roles than what we do to make it all work. Yeah.
Right, so twenty-four turns out to have been the empty box, so I guess this question goes to you. What is your vision for improving recycling in Hut City?
Well, I'm pretty proud of what we've been able to achieve over the last three years. We made a really bold decision with our rubbish and recycling changes. There was a lot of controversy at the time and absolutely in the rollout, there was a real challenge. When you have over 120,000 bins going out to 40,000-plus houses, it can be a bit bumpy and I acknowledge that. But we've already seen in our stats that have come through that there's been a significant increase in recycling in our city. That means less waste going to Silverstream landfill. Also, the system itself will have fully electric vehicle trucks over the next few years, once it's completely rolled out. We now don't have a situation where you have potentially in one street, one example was five different companies rolling up on five different days, just a completely inefficient way to deal with our waste and the emissions that it obviously produces. We also know that eighty percent of our families or our households are better off under this new recycling system and waste system from what they were paying previously. Yes, we have a little bit of work to do for low-waste users and making sure that those options are there for them and that will be part of the review and we've made that commitment really clear. Also, for our Kainga Orda families, this has been, you know, that's 4,000 properties in the Hut, this has been fully covered by them. We have seen a significant reduction in flytipping in the city. We don't have families who are having to dump wastehold rubbish into council bins in town centres anymore. And also, when you go around, you can see that there is just significantly less recycling pizza boxes, plastic, flying down, going down into sumps, ending up in our ocean. So, it's made a real difference. And the big thing, because a lot of people said, "Well, we don't disagree with the recycling change but the waste change." Well, if you didn't bring them both in at the same time, you would have had what is happening in Poredua and other parts of the country, where basically people choose not to have a waste bin and they dump all their rubbish into recycling bins and it all ends up going into the landfill. So, it was a really bold decision by the council to do what we did and is the absolutely right call. And that's the sort of council that I lead and I'm proud to lead.
And thank you for explaining that to me as from Wellington, where actually are in that boat hole. We got the recycling bin, we haven't got the rubbish bin. So, and I do know some of the stuff my former flatmate used to do was, used to really rub me up the wrong way. So, on that part. Tony, what box number?
Carry on up to number five, no surprise. Ah, thank you.
It's all right, there's number two bottles over here as well. You've got good audience members who likes to keep their candidates hydrated.
Okay. What are your thoughts on Hut City shifting to, shifting to voting using single transferable vote instead of first past the post?
Yeah, it's a good question. Generally, I prefer first past the post. It's easy to understand. And I think it's just a system which makes it a bit easier for those who aren't party-affiliated and incumbents to get elected. So, I would support first past the post continuum.
And you might be potentially causing a spoiler effect at this election if you win mayoralty and the, your district-at-large voters will be wasted by, as a result of first past the post?
I think there's plenty of chances there with the United Hut team. And it would be a great outcome if all five of them were elected this coming election.
Okay, Campbell?
Seventeen.
All right, let's see. Okay, climate change is one of our biggest threats. What will you personally do to role-model decarbonisation?
Yeah, for me, I do drive an electric vehicle, which is actually not always an option for everyone. So, there is a big question around how we make obviously electric vehicles more affordable in our country as well. I try to get on the bike, probably not as much as Tony in regards to coming over the Wainui Mata Hill in the mornings. My wife does a much better job than me on that front. But also, how I can reduce my own consumption and, you know, making sure that we are not going over the top of what we buy and throw away. I think that's, that consumerism culture that we have in western countries in particular is pretty terrible often. So, some self-reflections there because every bit does make a difference if we're going to really change how we live and mitigate the impacts of climate change.
Okay, what box number, Tony?
Break the trend and go for number twenty-nine.
Oh, I was fully expecting number seven here. But it's good that you're keeping me on my toes.
How sore are they?
They're not too bad. Had a good hard day's work yesterday, but hanging in there. Thanks for the, thanks for your concern, Sam.
No problem.
Question number seventeen. Do you support more housing in the ward, let's say, in Hut City? And if so, how would you see this achieved?
Well, there's certainly continuing demand for housing. And it's been good to see that there's been more homes being built in recent years and that needs to continue. I do have real concerns though, real concerns about the intensification, just the scale of it. The potential for three-story or even six-story buildings beside residential neighbourhoods is a scary thought. Just with the shading, let alone the problems it can create with parking. And of course, on the infrastructure that council has to support that intensification. I'm really unhappy with the changes that have come through from central government. I know it's backed by both political parties, so it's a tough challenge. But I think the council needs to put up some resistance to this, not just a submission, but actually to make some noise. It's not what the people of the city want. I mean, hearing loud and clear, people are concerned, people are worried about what might happen next to their own building. So, yes, more homes, but it needs to be planned much better than it is at the moment.
Okay, Campbell, what box number?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, coming right up. Question number twenty-eight. Do you think climate change should be the number-one concern at the ballot box?
I think it is up to ultimately the voter to decide what their major concerns or issues are and everyone has different views on that. I think that this absolutely has to be top of the list for all candidates and everyone should be challenged on their position and their track record when it comes to sustainability and also moving towards a low-carbon future. But it has to be. We just have to look at the last six weeks. We've had record rain in our city and we've seen the impacts of that. We've got sea level rise, the water table is coming up in low-lying parts of our city. We are susceptible to so many different aspects of Mother Nature here in Lower Hut. We actually have the most densely populated floodplain in Australasia on the valley floor. So, we are right, you know, we are right at the forefront of the impacts of climate change here in Lower Hut on so, on so many levels. Of course, we're going to need to do things at a regional level, national level and international level. But it's important that we all play our role. And I'm really proud that as a council, we've committed to moving our facilities to carbon-neutral by 2030. We're moving to carbon-neutral, carbon-zero by 2050. I think more needs to be done to move that faster, of course. But we are taking a real leadership role and acting in that space with what we do and how we make our decisions.
Okay, Tony, what box number?
I can't quite see without my glasses, so I'll have to go back to number six maybe.
I can do you seven.
Seven, thank you.
I have to agree with you there and I mean, I wasn't being cleared to drive trucks on my medical and I'm struggling to really read the numbers, so I know the feeling.
You picked the, you picked the second booby question, so you've got defer the question, which you can use at a later date.
You're going to use it before eight o'clock.
May I offer you another box? This lonely one, number ten. This lonely one, number 10. Question number two. What are you going to do for Stokes Valley with all the new housing going in, e.g. water, sewage, roading, et cetera?
Well, it is a big challenge and I've heard in particular about some intensive housing planned for, and I think it's Raokawa Street. A street actually where my great granny used to live when I was a boy. So I kind of know a little bit about the area. It's certainly going to change significantly with what's planned. It's a real big challenge for council. With that degree of extensive development, there's going to be heaps of pressure on the infrastructure. There needs to be, I'm sure there's going to need to be bigger pipes to handle the various outflows, wastewater, stormwater, let alone the transport issues. I've already spoken a bit about the potential bridge over the, to the state highway, so I won't repeat that. The important thing, of course, is that investment for growth doesn't need to be funded by rates. And the council has done the right thing by increasing the development contribution charges to reflect those, the extra infrastructure that's going to be needed. And I support that. And I think that's going to be the big challenge for the future though, is just the scale of works needed to cope with that demand.
Okay, Campbell?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. All right. How do you propose to foster a more positive public impression of more active modes of transportation, such as cycling and walking?
I think, as I said in a similar question, there is a real issue with that car, the bike debate and it can be quite negative and nasty. We need to take an integrated approach to how we do our transport planning. We have, as I say, the integrated transport strategy, which really looks at how we can make our city work for all users. And that's something that I'm committed to following through with. So I won't repeat my answer from the previous question, but I think that that's absolutely key. We need to take everyone with us. You know, we need to acknowledge that also we have the largest industrial area in Seaview and obviously the manufacturers and businesses that are based out there and what that means for transport for them to get goods to services and goods to where they need to go and coming in as well.
Okay, Tony?
Thanks, Ben. I can see all those numbers now. So I'll go for number 25.
Excellent. Box number 25 contains question number 25. In your view, what actually is the role of mayor and what skills do you bring to the role?
Well, it is a huge role. I'm sure Campbell's found that. And if I'm successful, I'm going to find the same thing. It's a, it's a big role. You're the leader of the elected members, the governance team. And a big task you have is to set the vision for the city, the strategies, lead the strategies and policies to deliver on that. I believe I have a real advantage over the incumbent in this situation because I have had an extensive career of management leadership prior to taking on this challenge. I have cut with this election, experience which will put me in good stead. I've led teams, teams of diverse people, teams with different characteristics, different visions, and brought them together and achieved a result. So with me in charge, you won't be seeing the degree of bickering, legal disputes, councillor resignations and the like that we've seen over the last trinium. I've got the skills to bring people together. I've done it before and if I'm mayor, I will do it again.
Okay, Campbell, what box number?
Twelve.
Number twelve. Question number five. What are you going to do to stop rate rises going up at a higher rate than wages?
It's really difficult to peg rates to wages because you, ultimately, we are rating a house and every house income is different. And you may have one, two, three, four people living in that house contributing to the costs. What I do know is that we need to do everything we can to keep costs down. We need to make sure that we are looking where we can cut our cloth. We did that with this annual plan where rates increase was 5.9%, the lowest in the Wellington region. And actually, that rates increase was below the level of inflation. And we made a really conscious decision back in January when we could see the cost of living and issues coming into our community, that we would stick within that. So that meant we had to cut our cloth and we had to reprioritise and refocus where our spending was going to go. But we also need to make sure that when we set rates, they are realistic. They are dealing with issues like in Stokes Valley. Everything Tony said before is absolutely true around needing to widen the pipes or make pipes bigger. I've been able to deal with the transport issues and I just don't understand where that money comes from. It doesn't come from trees. I can tell you that. It comes from rates. So we need to make sure that we are realistic and upfront and honest about those infrastructure challenges and that we are dealing with things that we can't afford to kick down the road. Because if you kick them down the road, A, you'll probably end up having poo on your street. And B, it will end up costing you more having to fix it with repairs and, and again, costing you more in the long run. So I think that we have taken a really balanced approach on that front and we are lower than colleagues in the region.
Okay, Tony, what box number?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Lucky for some.
I do remember a good story in Shannon where they removed all the thirteen from the streets. So, you know.
Box number thirteen, again, question number thirteen. You're on a roll here. What are your thoughts on the public libraries in Hut City and do you have any plans around them?
Well, public libraries are an essential part of the infrastructure of the city and in the hut, just as much as anywhere else. We're blessed to have quite a number of libraries. I'm just trying to think now if it's about eight across Lower Hut. Many of them have had some upgrades done. Some are still in need of upgrades. But ultimately, what the libraries are about is a community space, a place for books, a place for learning and a place where some people just like to go to hang out. They're very important for us. I think the book collection is something that needs to be preserved. There's something about a book. These days, of course, you can get access to almost everything online. But actually, holding a book in your hand, it brings something special. So I think the city needs to continue investing in the libraries and, you know, keeping that information there for generations to come.
Okay. Which box numbers considering you get to?
Last choice of the evening.
So you're not going to close any libraries at that rate? Can you just make sure you say that, Devlin?
Okay, there's no need to close libraries. You've put 120 million of extra overheads in the budget. That's where the savings need to come from. And since you've just brought up the subject, I just do want to, I do, I do want to just.
I just want to make sure you're not closing libraries.
Yeah, no, but I want to mention something as well now, since you came back to me. The lowest rates in the region at the moment, there's 30% rates over the last three years. Now, what people probably don't know is that next year, the council is planning to increase rates by 5% above the rates of the level of inflation. With inflation running at 7% at the moment, might drop to about 5%. There's a nasty surprise for voters, a nasty surprise that there's likely to be a double-digit rate increase next year under this leadership.
I'll just respond to that. For one, you are misleading people when you talk about 30% over the last three years because you are not factoring in, obviously that includes the changes to the rubbish and recycling, where 80% of people were actually better off because they're paying less. So you're not including that when you're talking about it. And also, you've included growth in there. So that's not a rates increase on people, that's a, that's a growth in the rating base. So we're talking more along the lines of 16, 17% Tony, so I'd like you to actually tell the truth.
I will tell the truth right now.
Properly, so let me finish.
You're misleading people right now.
Can I please finish? And then, so, so I think it's actually really important that you display, that you, you're a former chief executive, you're a former CFO, you should be explaining the information accurately. I would have thought that that's what you would do and I'm actually being very disappointed the last week.
Well, I will do that right now. Just grab the council's plans, grab their annual reports, look at the amount of rates they're collected and you will see they are collecting 30% more rates than they were three years ago. That's what I've been saying.
How many extra dwellings?
That is the truth.
I just explained the breakdown and explained it to people because this is the thing, this is the thing. People want, people in our roles to be upfront and honest with them. There is so much misinformation and disinformation out there and I'm not going to get, I'm not going to go on social media and explain your fantasy numbers because they aren't true, because you're actually misleading people.
Can I ask a question here? What percentage increase in dwellings have there been over the past three years? So we can put that into context.
I don't have that in front of me. But I, basically the growth in the rating base from growth has been about 1.1% over the last three years. So that factors in about 3, 3.34%. And then you also have the rubbish and recycling changes.
I just need to respond to that because Campbell Barry telling people that what I'm saying is not the truth is wrong. It is the truth. Look at the accounts. All I'm talking about is how much extra rates you are collecting.
And you are misleading people by stating it as you are. You're not explaining that it includes rubbish and recycling changes and growth in the, in the amount of houses in the city.
I'm just telling them how much extra rates you're collecting. The figure is correct. It's 30%. Stop trying to put smoke and mirrors in front of people.
Okay, can we please wrap up that?
I need a box number.
Fourteen.
All right, here's a very straightforward question. Number three. Why should I vote for you? No political jargon, please.
That's very good timing.
Yes, well, with me, you will have a mayor who is upfront and honest about issues. I will do my best to explain things as factually as I can. We live in a world of misinformation, disinformation. And I have been incredibly disheartened seeing that over the last couple of weeks from someone who I actually have a huge amount of respect for as a former chief executive. Now, it's really important that we are upfront about the big challenges we face as a city when it comes to infrastructure, when it comes to climate change, when it comes to a whole heap of different issues. And for me, you will have someone who will focus on that, will level with people and have those tough conversations. I'll also work really hard as we navigate through these different reforms that are happening at the moment. Water reform, RMA reform and the future of local government. So it's going to be a really important three years to have a council which is focused on those, on those issues.
Okay, and Tony, what box number?
Can I offer you number 20?
Such a hard choice. I think I'll go for 20.
Fine choice.
Yeah, the awkward bit about being at the end of the table.
All right, lucky last is question number seven. With the Melling intersection upgrade now consented and funded, will you advocate to get the intersection upgrade for the Kelson Major Drive Kennedy Goods Bridge traffic lights? And what will be your plan to convince other mayors to put it into the long-term regional transport plan?
Most certainly, but I do want to respond to that attack by Campbell Barry on my honesty. Yet again, he is denying the obvious fact that anyone can see from looking at the accounts of the council that they are collecting 30% more rates. Now, he's quite entitled to explain why, as he's done. It does not mean that that 30% figure is wrong. Now, sorry, back to the question. Most certainly. State Highway Two has been the poor second cousin of State Highway One for many years. It started with the roads of national significance, which really put the focus on State Highway One. And probably that was a reasonable thing to do. But the time is long overdue where State Highway Two was upgraded right through the Hut Valley. There should not be any traffic lights across that highway. So I most certainly would be keen to advocate and will advocate as strongly as possible for upgrades at Kelson. And.
KGB Bridge.
Yeah, well, it's kind of, it's kind of the one thing, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I live in Belmont actually and we have some traffic lights there. I think they really need to go as well as part of that intersection upgrade. We can't have those holdups. Traffic volumes are unfortunately increasing. We would like to get more people on public transport and on bikes and so on, but it's not happening yet. So we do need to address those highways. I've had a lot of experience on regional transport committees before. I've seen how that advocacy works. It is tough. You need a good business case, starting with just a strategic business case. But it is negotiation amongst the other mayors and ultimately NZTA makes the decision. But our city needs to put the strongest possible efforts into making that happen.
Well, thank you to both candidates. You have cleaned me out of boxes, so good job and let's move on.
Okay, so we're going to take a bit of a break because we're probably in a bit of overtime at the moment. But, well, you know, I would say a good debate here. And we'll see you after the break for hard-hitting questions. Okay, we're back. God, that's quick. So we've had a bit of a good chat. I've met some great people in the audience. I love you, Lower Hut. You know, I'm glad you're embracing it and I'm glad the incumbent candidates are, you know, embracing it. You know, in Wellington City, you need to up your game. So let's roll in for hard-hitting questions. Okay, so now let's explain a bit how hard-hitting questions work. Hard-hitting questions are those questions that the community have repeatedly submitted for. Now, with all it's in the ballot shows, we are focusing on free waters reform, considering that's a hot topic issue. And for the mayoral debates, which this will be the first one for it because we didn't do it with Apahut because they only have councillors at last. We will be asking, we're asking, we'll be asking, what candidates do they want to endorse their vote for councillors to help build them their team? So we're going to start off with hard-hitting question number one. And that is, what is your position on free waters reform and why have you come to that position? And we'll start off with Tony, since we start off Campbell last time round, let's start off with Tony.
Fair enough. I have actually answered a very similar question before, but let me just repeat that and emphasise a few points. Water form, water reform is needed in this country. The quality of water is crucially important. And we've seen examples across the country where it has not worked and people have had health issues as a result of poor water quality. I'm also thinking about the quality of water in our streams, harbours and the like. So reform is needed, but what is that reform? Certainly, the idea of a water regulator is excellent and I support that. We do need to have more regulation to make sure that people have safe water. There are reforms through from government. There's things I like about them, things I don't like about them. The things I like, I do like the involvement of Iwi in the governance. But I think the governance arrangements, when taken in totality, are confusing. It'll be hard to hold these new entities to account and the auditor general has raised the same issue. So I think there's room for improvement. As I've said before, my main issue with the water reforms is while Campbell has said there has been engagement with the community, I think it's been weak and half-hearted. There have been submissions, but they haven't been delivered with force. I think the outcome of those submissions has just been meekly accepted. I think we really need to understand what our community thinks about it and I hope it's not too late. And then advocate strongly. It's not a given when these things come through from government that they happen in our city. And I'd give the example of the super city. We had this proposal being pushed by government agencies, by powerful people in Wellington. And it looked like it was going to be a done deal. But the community in the hut did not want it. Comprehensive surveying was done, unbiased statistical surveying, and 80% of people did not want it. The council put in a huge effort to fight that change and that that fight was ultimately successful. We did not give up at the first hurdle. We did not give up by putting in a submission and then just waiting to see what happened. So my big concern with this is the fight for the people. Genuine consultation, putting people before politics and arguing, advocating for what they want.
Okay, Campbell?
No, thank you. So I just look at the scale of the challenge for us here in Lower Hut and the Wellington region. And I'm fortunate or unfortunate, some may say. And I'm fortunate or unfortunate, some may say, to be the chair of the Wellington Water Committee and can see the scale of the problem across Wellington. And I know that it's worse in other parts of the country. We actually just tonight had a briefing on the cost of infrastructure over the next 30 years when it comes to growth. That's an estimated $1.2 billion here in Lower Hut alone. And we just simply do not have anywhere near enough in our budgets, obviously currently, or within the financial toolbox that we have as a council to be able to fund that. That's not including the renewals that were deferred. Like I say, 2020, there was $230 million worth of deferred renewals, 190 kilometres of water pipes that hadn't been renewed that should have been, and 100 kilometres of wastewater pipes. I actually don't think, and I don't blame the previous council on that. This is a problem up and down the country and often those assets under the ground are forgotten. And instead councils focus on what's above ground because it's more sexy and it's what probably gets votes at elections. I'm not willing to continue with that same thinking. I have continuously said that we need to find a solution. I agree with Tony that reform is needed. And I've worked really hard to try and strengthen that to deal with some of the issues around ownership, local accountability and responsiveness. What I don't understand with what Tony is saying is that on one hand, he agrees that reform is needed, change is needed, and he agrees with some things and he disagrees with others. But then he's saying the council should be fighting on the hilltops against it. And that actually doesn't match up with what you're saying. So my approach and the council's approach has always been, how can we make this better? How can we make it work for lower hut ratepayers? How can we be in the best possible position post any type of reform? And really importantly, and this is really important, this is actually really important, is that we have the money in the budgets necessary for the free water investment over the next 10 years in the long-term plan. And the reason that's important is because, as Tony did also say, there is a risk that these things don't go ahead. We've got a general election next year. National Party have already said that they would repeal free waters reform. So we need to continue and make sure that the budgets are there and that we are spending and allocating appropriately. And on top of that, it's really important that if these new entities or when these new entities take over and are in position, they will be taking what is in our long-term plan. So any council that undercooks their books and doesn't put the investment in that's needed now will be selling their ratepayers' shores within these new entities. And that's absolutely something I'm not prepared to do.
I would just like to clarify a few things since Campbell referred to something I said. I was not advocating for the council getting in the trenches and fighting against these reforms. I was advocating for the council ascertaining what our community actually wants and fighting for that. I don't think the council actually did ascertain what our community wants. So they're kind of fighting blind, I suppose. The other point Campbell mentioned is 1.2 million needed for growth infrastructure and the city can't afford it.
Billion.
1.2, okay, that's even...
That's a bit more, isn't it?
Yeah, but let me just go on to make my point. 1.2 billion and the city can't afford it. Development contributions are set to fund growth infrastructure. So it's not a question of whether the city can afford it or not. The developers, building the new homes, creditless demand, they are the ones that should be paying, not the ratepayer.
And can I just respond to that? That's exactly what this council has been doing. What I'm saying is the scale of the challenge is huge. Obviously, development fee contributions will be a big part of that. But I'm really proud to actually lead a council that stopped corporate welfare, which we stopped the $27 million in handouts that went to developers to encourage growth in the city without a plan to actually fund infrastructure. And we've turned that around. And we, you know, I think that we've seen that you can't continue to get sort of drunk on growth and encourage growth and then not have any money in your budget to fund it.
Okay, can we move on to the next hard-hitting question, please?
I would just remind the audience that Mr. Barry did vote for those remissions. He's now so deeply against it. You did in the beginning.
I did not vote for extending them.
Voted for them in the beginning?
No, I did not vote for extending them, which they had them blow out to $27 million.
In the beginning, you voted for them.
Can we please move on to the next hard-hitting question? Okay, what is your position on the $199 million Cross Valley Link project? And will you be supporting or opposing it in the long-term plan? Campbell, would you like to start off?
Yes, absolutely. The Cross Valley Link Connection Programme is absolutely vital for a number of reasons in Lower Hut. It's from a resilience point of view, it's absolutely key. We know that the Esplanade and area is very much subject to the impacts of climate change. And we need to also, with this project, and actually I'd like to explain the project because a lot of people think it's just the road. Well, it's not. It's about making improvements on the Esplanade for public transport options and active cycling options as well. We have, there's been a lot of work over the last few years to encourage that and make that happen. So we were able to get the program business case approved from government. And of course, we've got our share in the council long-term plan, so we're really committed to this project. But we will need government to step in and we'll need to continue to advocate as we head towards the next general election and get commitments from both major political parties. National Party last time, I think they promised most transit projects in the region. But they did include funding in fully the Cross Valley Link Connection as well. And we'd be looking to seek those same commitments, acknowledging that it will be challenging given infrastructure cost blowouts, I think, across the country. But that is such a vital project for Lower Hut and that east-west connection across the city.
Okay, Tony.
Thank you. Like Campbell, this is an essential project for the city. It's been an issue for far too long. Traffic jams along the Esplanade for people commuting from Eastbourne, from Wanuamata, trying to get into Wellington. It's been clogged up for a long time. So yes, most definitely, we need to advocate as strongly as we can, continue to do that. I was very disappointed to see the funding for the roading, the Cross Valley Link Road, being deferred out to further in the future at the long-term plan that this council adopted. Most disappointed indeed, so I'm not sure of the reason for that. I do support the modifications to it, making more allowance for cycling and for busways and the like. But seeing that project funding deferred was a big disappointment, especially as I did recall and have seen Mr. Barry promising that construction would get underway. We certainly don't see that. It's a long way off and it's further off than it was three years ago.
Just to respond to that, we actually, in the long-term plan, put a more realistic total budget for the Cross Valley Link Connection Programme because previous council had about half the price, which was a bit of a trend, actually, in how we funded our projects and put them in the plans completely under budget. And then once you actually get to them and have to build them, have to come to ratepayers and say, wait, sorry, costs have gone up or doubled or tripled. So that's what we did in the long-term plan. And it will be clear that we need government support. I would love to be able to get on with constructing the Cross Valley Link Connection. And there are aspects of it that we can start sooner rather than later, but we do need to get that support from government as well.
Okay, so now let's move on to hard-hitting question number three. What will be your plan as leader of the council table to bring all 12 elected councillors together and work collectively for the good of the Hut City Council ratepayer? Tony?
Well, I've said before, I'm very experienced in leading governance teams and leading management teams. I'm used to working with people with different views, different objectives and different affiliations. What I've seen with this council is if elected members don't agree with the majority view, they're somehow sidelined and rendered ineffective and ultimately resign or don't seek reelection in the following term. It's very disappointing to see this. So my intention would be, after being elected as mayor, to gather together all those successful councillors. I hope there's a majority, well, even all of our team from United Hut succeeds. But even if there's not, every councillor should have a role, an important role in helping influence the future of this city. And I believe I have the skills to bring everyone together without the bickering and fighting and resignations we've had in the last three years.
Okay, Campbell.
So for me, it's really important that you are able to work with every single councillor around the table. And I can tell you one thing, I won't be telling people who to vote for. I won't be telling people to block vote. I will be working with everyone who is elected, who the people of Lower Hut choose, no matter if they're a United Hut member or otherwise, to build a council that has a clear vision, is able to get on with doing its annual planning, long-term plans and can lead our city. So for me, that's, again, what we've been able to do this term. Some of the behavioural issues, I've got to say, it's because we set standards. We didn't have standards previously at council around behaviour. And that behaviour was held accountable. And unfortunately, some of that is incredibly messy. But I stand by absolutely having those standards and making sure that we have a safe place at council for all people, not just for elected members, but for all of our staff as well. And that should be a bottom line for you as a candidate as well.
Okay, now here's for hard-hitting question number four, for that only appears on mayoral shows. Just to let those at home do know, the upper hut one, we didn't have this question there because they only elect councillors at large. So we felt that was a bit pointless to be asking that. But in Hut City, they have wards. So this is where it would work quite well. So the question is, was it? Choose one candidate standing in each ward that you would like voters to vote for in order to help build your team as mayor. Now, who did I start? So, okay, Tony. Yep, I'm trying to remember which order I had the people in there.
Okay, well, as most of the audience and you will know, there is a whole team. We're working together. We are independent in that we're not going to block vote on things, but we have four common objectives. And I've been talking about those tonight. They're relating to spending control, lower rates, fixing the services that are broken, getting projects done and genuine consultation. So if I start with the northern ward, in the northern ward, we have Alice Hurdle. I would recommend her to voters. Going down to the eastern ward, David Hall. And then across in central, Glenda Barrett. And the western, Sandra Greg, Harbour, there's Petra Sim. Have I got them all? Oh, Wanuamata, Gill Galley. So those are the wards. Also interested in the at-large candidates.
Well, we just do one. Just do one considering, you know, there's six of them, otherwise we'll be here all night.
Well, I've got five excellent candidates I can recommend for the at-large. We've got Prabha Ravi, Rosanna Von Keisenberg, John Middleton, Jodie Winterburn. And I think that's the five. Peter Fraser, sorry, sorry, it's getting late.
There's a few to remember. Now, Campbell, how would you go? Well, who would you recommend across all the wards of, who would you recommend your voters to vote for?
So I'm not going to tell voters who to vote for. I am a mayor who will work with absolutely anyone around the table as long as they are willing to work together, collaborate as a team. And I actually think it's quite concerning that we do have, for the first time in a very long time, a political group, basically a political party, which has formed and is saying, you've got your mayoral person saying, only vote for the United Hut candidates. That is not going to serve you well if you were to become the mayor and trying to get the council working together. So I will work with absolutely anyone and whoever the ratepayers of Lower Hut are put into those positions.
Okay, and we're now at a little bit of a dealt bit of the SOB. Would you like to take the microphone and see who's in the audience has got a question that might like to have asked? Because I feel there's a couple of burning ones that could be out there.
I would be delighted, Sam. Anyone who has a question in the audience, attract my attention or wander off to you with the mic.
Got one at the top.
All right, thank you very much.
And you're welcome to direct them to the host, but I don't know what answer I can give.
Do either of you have on your campaign group or whatever, people who are anti-vax, anti-mandate or who are part of the protests at Pilebit?
Yeah, start off, yeah.
No.
Absolutely not. But no one, no one in either of your party or, no one in either of your campaign groups were part of anti-mandate, anti-vax or were part of the protests?
Not to my knowledge.
All I can tell you, absolutely not. No way that I would have anyone working on my campaign or involved in my campaign in any way whatsoever who was involved there.
Okay.
Do I have another question from the audience? Yes, I see one down here.
I'm curious to know your stance on what your mayoralty were doing for teenagers and youth crime?
Who would like to kick an add-on that one off?
Yeah, really good question. Thank you for that. And we know we've had some challenges just in the last few weeks at the Bunny Street Bus Stop, which has been a problem area for some time, but the issue is much larger than that. It goes into many of our suburbs. So for me, there's a few different ways to approach it. One, from a council point of view and what we, sorry, that camera's in the way. From a council point of view, we obviously can control, for example, our CCTV cameras, SIPED, Crime Prevention through Environmental Design, working with city safe ambassadors and police to help make our public spaces safer. So that is a commitment that I am giving and it's part of my campaign. But there's a bigger challenge here of how do we work with the young people? How do we work with their families to be able to obviously resolve some of the underlying issues? The police have a pretty huge job. They've got a, you know, they've got some pretty limited toolbox in dealing with some of the behaviour that they've got. But it's an all-of-community, village approach to actually deal to, I think, some of the underlying challenges. But we need to do more to make sure that every person in our city feels safe and is safe, whether they're catching a bus or going about their daily business.
Okay, and I'll probably say stand up as well because all the cameras are in the way.
This will be a first tonight, but Campbell, I actually agree entirely with what you said and I back his comments 100%. It is personal to me because my stepdaughter does catch the bus at that Bunny Street stop. So some of the stories I hear are quite alarming and I do get worried for her safety. So all those matters that you mentioned with CCTV and the underlying issues, I 100% agree with Campbell.
Okay, who's got their next hand up?
Time for one more. Yes, okay, I've got a question down here.
I feel we've got eight minutes to fill.
Yeah, Mayor Barry, I read somewhere where you were quoted as saying the nine-ear pool is now at 89 million. Is that a typo or is that correct?
John, so John is a United Hut candidate. Thank you, John, for the question. That is not correct and I've never said that. The cost of the pool is as it has always been.
So it's at 68 million?
Yes, yep.
One more question?
Yep, keep going. And I've actually even possibly could have one possibly coming through online as well.
And I'll just say that it's absolutely my intention for, because this hasn't actually happened often, to deliver that pool on time and on budget and we are tracking that way currently.
Kia ora to two of you. I'm Barbara Hay. I'm actually standing as an at-large candidate. Is the council or will the council intend to beef up our resilience planning within our communities? I know in Stokes Valley, there's been one chap who's been trying to get things moving for years with limited success because it's engaging people. It seems to me it's a really good time right now to really bring forward the whole issues with climate change. So what would your thoughts be if you were mayor as to how much you would push resilience planning within communities?
I think it's absolutely crucial. It's obvious where we're facing increasing dangers from climate change. Just have to look around Eastbourne, the slips, of course, as well with the heavy rains. It is a real worry. So I think the council does need to invest in more planning. Another thing we have noticed in the past, immediately after severe events, the community is more receptive to discussions, more receptive to taking steps themselves to be more resilient. And so I think as well as planning for infrastructure upgrades, there needs to be a programme of engagement and promotion of personal resilience right across the city.
Okay, we've got one up there and we've got one down here.
Should I respond to that as well?
Yeah, go here, go here. Before asking, yeah, we'll get Campbell's response.
I was admiring Tony's answer. I agree with the comments and also when it is front of mind, that is a time for us to have some of those really important conversations. What I have outlined, what the council has outlined, is the use of that better-off funding, $33.4 million. And to put a climate resilience lens over the top of that, officials are going to report back to the new council. And a little bit of an awkward spot because this has happened during an election. So we're saying officials go away, do the work. And then what are some of the longer-term, medium-longer-term improvements that we can make? Personally, I'd like to see at least $20 million of that funding go towards climate resilience in the city. But we also will need to have conversations with government. I've already... I've already started that with the local MPs and also Waikato Tahi when it comes to access as well.
Okay.
Hi, I've got two questions actually. One directed at you, Tony. Just, I just want clarification on how you were planning on taking traffic lights out of the, off the motorway? And you mentioned Kelvin, no, not Kelvin.
Kelson.
Kelson, I knew that.
And remember to leave out the T, otherwise we're talking about suburb in Auckland.
Yes, 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 sorry, Kelson. And potentially the traffic lights coming across the Kennedy Good Bridge. How, if you take traffic lights out, how is traffic supposed to merge across the lanes to get either A to Upper Hut or to Wellington? I couldn't understand the logic around it, yeah.
It's a very complex intersection up there. Because you've got the bridge, of course, and the road to Kelson and they're not aligned. And you also have the traffic from Belmont, which I'm sure NZTA would like to see separated from the highway interchange as well. It'd be a similar issue to at Mellang. Grade-separated interchange. I'm not sure the exact design, but the traffic would perhaps flow under an elevated roundabout or elevated on-and-off ramps. The Dous is perhaps a simpler design because it's a less complex intersection, but it's an example of how it can be done. Traffic lights are gone and traffic can still flow on and off the highway.
And I have to say, whoever programmed the traffic lights at Mellang, they deserve a medal because that's, was it, I think it's between an eight and a 10-step cycle. And it's, I've watched the go through the cycles. It's quite amazing how they've managed to work out all the little introductory things that sit down there and at least make it where traffic doesn't hold in the middle in the right places. So whoever that is deserves a medal of some sort. I don't know what council can give out and I don't know actually who did it. But, you know, whoever did it did a good job and I'd like to thank them for that, for the great work because it's quite interesting watching it all work.
Can I just add in there that, just a reminder that certainly the bridge aspect, you know, is something that would cost council money. And it's, again, something that doesn't quite line up with cutting the rates. So I just think you've got to be really careful here in setting expectations and also saying you're going to cut the rates.
I never said I would cut the rates. I said I'd stop the excess rate rises.
Okay, what's the second question?
So my second question is actually, is actually to do with the Patoni Esplanade. I live in Patoni and I live one block away from the Esplanade, so I know what traffic's like. I used to work in Wellington, so I know what travelling in on a bus was like going in and coming out. So you're talking about a link thing, a walking cycling thingy link, right? I don't understand where that starts and ends and how that's supposed to help with traffic buildup because it is horrendous, A through the Esplanade and B, at the same time, through Jackson Street. It is horrific to travel via vehicle. How is that going to get fixed and how's that going to work? How does that work?
So there has been, I suppose, a proposed roadside of 60 years along Wakefield Street, basically to connect onto the Dous interchange from White Lines east-west. Coming, then you'd have to think about the traffic coming from one side.
Sorry, how long?
Oh, 60 years, probably.
I'll be dead.
Talked about when Tony first started in local government. No, just joking.
Traffic.
Not far off. And so the, so it's a road, obviously, in that aspect, but you are looking then at multi-motor options of what you can do on the Esplanade. But we do know that there is major congestion right through there in the places you described. The challenge you will have, and we need to be honest with people, is that you will still have challenges from the Dous interchange getting on the State Highway too and bottlenecks there. So it's an important road from my point of view, from resilience and a part of the network.
Will there be like a double bridge? Because that one, that bottleneck that you get coming from the Esplanade to go on to the Patoni Bridge to get on to the motorway, that is horrendous.
Mergers.
Yeah, yeah.
It's quite a, yeah.
Has the thought of maybe a double bridge where, you know, with your link thing, maybe in the end, a double bridge situation?
The detailed design hasn't, wouldn't have been at that sort of level. There is an idea of where this would go. The other challenge we've got is actually linking on to the Dous interchange because unfortunately it actually wasn't designed in a way that makes it easy to connect on, which is a bit of a failure in the planning. So I'm happy to take this conversation away and give you some maps and some further information to explain it.
Okay, we have a question at home and it's just appeared on the bottom of the screen. My question is to both candidates, what's your stance on the amalgamation of the Hut Valley councils? We can thank Stuff for sitting there putting out many articles about that. Tony?
It's like déjà vu for me because it was such a big part of my job for a few months, probably even longer than that when it was last proposed. And back then, the community was consulted and about 80%, give or take, was strongly against the supercity proposal. At that time, the suggestion of amalgamating the two Hut Valley councils was also put forward. And in fact, the Hut City Council did put forward an alternative plan. It's almost like a fallback option, if you like, of four cities, including a combined Hut Valley. The reality is though, that people in Upper Hut were very strongly against combining with Lower Hut. And I think from memory, the people of Lower Hut were a bit ambivalent either way. My view and the others involved was it would be very rude to try and press that case upon the citizens of Upper Hut, particularly when our own citizens were taking that stance in relation to the proposal to join up with Wellington. So my view, cutting to my view, is it's something for the community to decide. The only way is to ask them again in a survey if it comes up, if it keeps being pushed. Ask them again in a survey what they want and then the council should advocate strongly for that position.
Okay, Campbell?
One thing that has really opened my eyes and frustrated me as a mayor in this term, as a first-term mayor, is the lack of regional planning and thinking that happens in the Wellington region. It drives me absolutely up the wall when we're so disconnected in how we plan housing, transport, water, all these different issues. So there is a place for better regional coordination on regional issues and we need to do more in that space. I think the, you know, you don't want to put the cart before the horse here. We have major reform coming in from government. The Future of Local Government Review will also hopefully give some solutions around what will be the role of councils in five, 10, 15 years' time and that could be very different. My view is it shouldn't just be a review of the future of local government, it should be a review of government in New Zealand and what do we deliver nationally? What do we deliver regionally? What do we deliver locally? After that, then I think it will be a conversation around a reorganisation. But you can't do that before, you know, you can't put the cart before the horse. We need to know what local government's going to look like into the future.
And we will, I've got an online question here. Was it Felgoon here?
Is he making chicken?
Yeah. I have, I did put out the invite. I would have preferred free candidates here because I think it would have been a very different debate. But there were apologies was given that he was not able to commit due to Wellington on the plate. So that is why he's not here. I do offer every candidate the opportunity for all shows to be there because I am one who believes every candidate should have the opportunity to sit down there and put their best foot forward. However, they as a candidate have a choice to say, yay, let's celebrate it or hide away. So that is their choice. And Campbell, Tony, I have to say thank you for putting your feet to the fire. As I say, with probably many of the Poro City Council incumbents, Kebbe Coast District incumbents, Upper Hut City Council incumbents and Hut City Council incumbents so far have been good. Wellington City Council, you need to lift your weight up. And I'm sorry I'm having to do that, Dig, but, you know, fingers crossed, all your incumbents, are you going to suddenly start, all sit there replying to Stacey to say, I'm in? So now let's head for closing statements. Campbell, let's start off with you. What closing statements would you like to give to the audience at the camera that Ray's holding?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to It's in the Ballot team for putting this event on. I think you're doing an absolutely outstanding job. I don't know how you're all still awake with the amount of candidate meetings that you're holding, but this is incredibly important for local democracy, for us to be able to have this discussion about the future of our city. And I have no doubt that both me and Tony agree that the Hut is the best place in New Zealand to be. We are really proud to be from here and it's great to be able to talk about the issues that matter to our people and families. So for me, it's really important, again, that people focus on the big challenges that we are going to be facing over the next five, 10, 15 years. Infrastructure investment, growth in our city, climate change. What are we going to do to make sure that our future generations are looking at opportunities over burdens when they become the future guardians? And that's really important for me because the decisions I make now are not about my legacy or a legacy of any particular council. It's about doing what's right and it's about making sure that they can inherit a city that they're really proud of.
Okay, Tony?
Well, thank you also. It's been an enjoyable show. Enjoyed the discussion, Campbell, and thank you also to the audience. I think we've got a fair few supporters on either side and a good bit of clapping. It's all gone really well from my point of view. What I'd like to say in closing is now's the time when the council really needs some experience. And I have that experience through 12 years as the chief executive and a career in finance and strategic management. Things are tough and you need that experience to get things done. I think it's true, there does need to be more investment in infrastructure. But it has to be done in a way that keeps the city affordable, affordable not just for us, but for our children. When you have a plan that sees debt levels being maxed out, avoiding the future generation of an opportunity to borrow and invest any more in the city, it's just not good enough. So there does need to be a careful eye cast over the plans. There does need to be some pruning done. And I've immediately highlighted this big increase in overhead spending. I've heard, not to this date, I haven't heard one single justification for it. And I'm happy to show anyone how I calculate the figure, it's there in the plans. So that's the main area of focus for me, is getting the finances back under control. It is where I have got a vast experience in. But also, I've just highlighted it through tonight, the areas of consultation, engagement and putting people before politics. There's so many big issues going on at the moment. We need advocacy free from party alliance. And that's what I offer and that's what our team of independents offer as well. Finally, I think it's just not good enough that the council was carrying on not being able to deliver consents at a time when housing is desperately needed. So we need someone who can sort that out and I can do that. Thank you.
Okay, so it's that time of night. Can I please thank you both, Tony and Campbell, for coming out this evening? I would also like to thank the audience for coming in tonight. I think it's probably one of our biggest turnouts we've had, been the eighth show on the run. I would like to also thank the audience at home. I think we've probably had the biggest online watching audience as well, watching live. And I'm pretty sure there are going to be many people watching the replays. And I'd also like to thank Stacey Ray, who are here in studio, and Eddie, who is coming remotely from Auckland, doing the job. Not many of you would actually know that we're not just all based in Wellington. And I'd like to also thank how Eddie got all the graphics lined up, ready for tonight's show. It's not exactly easy to get all this in place. Now, we got, if you want to submit questions, you can do so. You can go on to our website and go to... Oh, who did I forget to thank? Oh, Ben, I haven't finished that. Oh, God, yes, guilty for that, sorry, Ben.
He'll get to it in time, I'm sure.
You've done so many shows with me. I mean, you know, I think you're going to have the most co-hosted award out there.
I'll claim that one.
Yeah, I'm now just trying to find my document that tells me what next shows are coming up because there's a few on there. I can confirm if you want to head across the hill to Wainui Mata tomorrow with at Build-A-Bek Hall. On Friday, we are going to have our first regional council show with the Poro Tarawa constituency at the Titahie Bay Bowling Club. On Sunday, we're heading off to Kelson for the Western Ward show. And I think that's where we're going to have Stacey joining me, ready up for the double debates for the Upper Hut merril, was it Upper Hut Councillors at Large on Monday and Tuesday. Stacey hosting Monday, I'm hosting Tuesday. And then if you want to head for next Wednesday, we've got the Wellington merril debate, which we've still yet to finalise on the exact time it's happening. Our plan is seven o'clock, but that show seems to be jinxed with clashes. And it's so annoying trying to make it all fall into place. But somehow we'll make it work because, you know, it's in the ballot. We always make things work, one way or another.
The show must go on, eh, Sam?
Exactly, exactly, the show must go on, you know. So thank you for everyone who's been watching tonight. Please give a big round of applause to our candidates for being here, for our audience, to our audience at home. And we'll see you back tomorrow at Build-A-Bek Hall in Wainui Mata at 7pm. And for Lower Hut people, you know, join you there tomorrow or join us at Kelson on Sunday at Community Centre. Good night.